Okay, we're live.
Welcome to the Buffalo's Common Council Caucus meeting where we'll be considering items that will be going before the common council at tomorrow's meeting, including them are items that had public hearings that will be going before the common council tomorrow. If you have any concerns, any questions regarding any of those items in which we've held public hearings, please contact the council, our chief of staff, and they'll forward that information to each common council member. With that, we're going to get started with our agenda today. We have a pretty long agenda. We're going to start off with the Controller's Office.
The Land O' Dall Controller's Office. Good afternoon, everyone. We have one item on air, basically a community advocate position. Controller is real strong in providing financial data to the community. Disposition with budget for last year, we didn't have it fail, so we do also budget for again for fiscal year 2020, 2021. So we're looking to bring somebody on to really promote the finances of the city and then also be out in the community and be visible to the city. And any questions that residents might have on behalf of the Controller's Office? We're looking for that person to be able to answer those questions and provide that financial data to the public.
Thank you. Any questions for the Controller's Office? No questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Over to Public Works Commissioner Michael Finn.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. We had a lot on the agenda, on the agenda, so I'm gonna open up the questions. I did want to mention however that we're going to be requesting two items to late file. The first, Councilmember Bowman is aware of a request for parking regulations around a charter school in the Lovejoy District that just came in. We want to get those in before school starts in the fall, being the last session. That's important here. The second is a donation of services for the naval park. There's a railing that failed there and we're out getting quotes and the vendor ultimately decided, you know, we'll just donate the services. We're happy to do it for the naval park. So both of those, we're asking to accept as late files. I'll be entering them into the track system shortly. With that, happy to open to questions. Like I said, we've got a lot on the agenda today. So I don't want to take too much time talking about things that you're not interested in.
Councilmember Rashid Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike, I got a couple of questions regarding item number 20. Enter into agreement with AT&amp;T for GPS. Can you explain, is that for, because I saw a lot of cell phones, is that for cell phones or is that for vehicles?
Oh, that is for vehicles. Our contract for the GPS system that we've utilized in Public Works for some time now was up as of June 30th. We put that back out to RFP and found that AT&amp;T provides the best value for the services that we'd like to continue going forward. The scope of the services is very similar to what's been discussed previously, but just to give everyone up to speed. Nearly all of the vehicles within Public Works have GPS system included in them so that we can see where the vehicles are and what they're doing. They also provide the ability for our management team to see the work that's done. So people call through and one, they say, hey, my street wasn't plowed. We're able to go and say, you know, no, you know, the street was plowed at a certain time. The snow's been continuing. Maybe that's why you're not seeing that, that you feel it was plowed, but we've at least got it once and we'll continue to provide the plowing that's necessary.
Is that something that we could offer through, because I know the police department, we had those vehicles and we talked to them about bringing us another resolution that had that GPS functionality in it. Is this something that we can do throughout the city? Can that be something that's added to other vehicles that are city vehicles?
It's certainly possible. I don't know all the nuances of the technology and whether it translates to police vehicles, but I'd be happy to bring this to the attention of the police management to see if it's something that'll work for them. I'll say too, AT&amp;T has a statewide contract for these services. So, you know, they're, they're a very large, obviously they're a very large company, but they provide a lot of services and expandability, I think, wouldn't be a big issue for them. So I'll certainly do that, Councilman.
What was it? Do you remember what the total amount is? Because I know there was a lot of dollar amounts, a lot of different, I mean, it was a lot of detail. Do you know what that total dollar amount for, for the vehicles for the city is?
I don't offhand, but I can email you that as a follow-up.
That's fine. The second one, I know it's not in my district, but it was about the bridge, the bridge to the what is it, Centennial Park? That's the waterfront? Are they going to replace the new bridge? I just wanted, I just had a question. I know it's not in my district, but, because I know that was a new bridge that they put there, right?
If we're talking about the Hudson, the current Hudson Street Bridge, that is planned for replacement as part of the many projects that are ongoing with Centennial Park. I know, I believe Andy Rabson, Andy, you want to speak to some more details about that?
Yeah, the, the the only reference we have for the bridge is, is primarily in the, in the second amendment to our agreement with BUDC. That's what Parks is filing as an item which allows for additional funding from the Wilson Foundation. The primary change in that is funding for the bridge design. But the Hudson Street Bridge is not a new bridge, that's an old bridge and it's going to eventually be removed and replaced with a new bridge over 190. I don't know if, if we're talking about the same bridge. I don't know if there was something else that was filed.
That, that might be my misunderstanding, so, but, so I just got one more question regarding items number 22 to 26. They're extending contract extensions. Can you give us the amount on those? We don't have that, so if you can just get that to us.
I will, I will follow a substitution item if that works.
Yeah, it's fine with me. I mean, just the amount, because it doesn't have an amount on it. It says an extension, but it doesn't have what the amount of the contract was.
Yeah, these, these contracts are tricky because there is on-call services, so you don't know when things are going to break, but we'll make an estimate certainly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can you list the, if you're going to do substitution, which ones are you going to be doing the substitutions on? Are you going to do them on?
If I'm understanding, Councilmember Wyatt's request, it would be items 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27. Those are all permission to extend contracts for various on-call services. And I can talk with each of those departments and get estimates of the amounts that we think we're going to need to extend them.
Okay, so you're going to file substitution items for those?
It also should include item number 22.
22 is, 20, item number, I'm sorry, this is Andy, 22 is not a, an extension, it's an amendment, and I believe the attached, there is an attachment to the current filing that has the amendment that's being proposed that shows the breakdown of changes.
Yeah.
Is that CIR, CIR electric? Is that referring to the same one?
No, on, on the today's agenda, the Parks one was 22, but maybe it's changed.
Majority Leader, Councilmember Wyatt, do you have the latest agenda?
No, I don't. This is, this says 440.
Yeah, there's, there's one that was generated at 111.
Okay.
Okay.
I think the numbers are different.
Numbers are correct, 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27.
And, and also item 21, the GPS, I believe Councilmember Wyatt was also looking for a total on that one.
Yes.
Okay, so you've got 21 as well?
Yes.
Okay. Jeff, can you note that in the journal? Okay, any further questions for Commissioner? Rashid Wyatt.
If nobody else has a question, I was trying at the hall. Mike, I like the fact that on numbers regarding a large main rehab project, you have the apprenticeship piece along with that?
Yes.
Okay, now, is that for all the projects or just these two in particular? All the projects, you utilize the apprenticeship piece?
The, the apprenticeship program applies to any contract over, I believe it's $100,000. And we have made a habit for some time now of filing a copy of the contractor certification that they'll comply with that along with our report of bids for all the items, for all the contracts that those apply to. The only ones you won't see that on are projects that are have federal highway money. We're not able to include the apprenticeship. They have a different way of doing business within that. But every other contract is not funded with the federal highway money. You'll see those.
Now, is this, is this, does this have to do anything with the NWBE? Because I know it said 10%, but that's not our guidelines for the MWBE, is it?
Correct, those are totally separate. MWBE on city contract is still 25% minorities, 5% women, and on top of that is 10% apprenticeship. Two, two separate regulations.
Well, a big ups for that apprenticeship piece, because I know that your predecessor was pushing the apprenticeship piece and I'm hopeful that you can find people, because I know that that was a challenge before, but hopefully we can continue with that. Last item, and I'm just going to say what this is, is H O L Industries, I believe.
Yeah, Hall.
It says screen replacement and it was referring to an item, but what item is it referring to? It said the $10,000 hole was referring to an item, but I don't know what item it was referring to.
I'm trying to pull it up on the agenda, which? Correction, correction, change order?
It was near the end of the agenda. It was like almost the third one from the bottom.
Okay.
From the public works.
Yeah, retention release, okay. So, what that item is, is the, is permission to release retention on that contract. For, for all of our city contracts, we're required to by charter hold 5% retention until the contract is complete and accepted. In cases where we desire to release the retention early for various reasons, we have to come to, to council to do that. For this case, this contractor has successfully completed all the work that was originally procured. We're asking them to stay on to help us with some specialized diving services to inspect within Colonel Ward. We couldn't do those during COVID. So we held their contract open still, so we want to release the retention, reduce it down to $10,000, but still keep the contract open so they can do the specialized services within the plan.
So, so this contract, that contract is not in this agenda, correct?
No, that was reported a long time ago.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you.
Any further questions for Commissioner Finn, Rab, or Francisco? No further questions, we'll move on. Commissioner Brendan Mahaffey?
I'm here.
Go ahead, Brendan.
Great, thank you. Well, the, one of the top items before you is the Emergency Solutions Grant CV2 Funds. This is to assist with the homeless situation in the city of Buffalo. These recommendations are put together by the Continuum of Care, which is overseen by the Department of Community Services with a number of local service agencies. I have Sue Lamadu who is on the phone and can join to get into much more detail about what the recommendations are for this funding. We would like it approved tomorrow so that we are able to assist these families over August and into September and October. So Sue, if, if you could.
Sue, you've muted yourself. We can't take you off. You'd have to do that manually on your end.
Majority Leader?
Yeah.
While we're waiting, can I ask Brendan a question? Brendan, I'm looking at the item, is there a list of the agencies?
Yes, Sue would have that, yes.
Okay. Rashid Wyatt?
Brendan, what have we done as far as community outreach? I know that there's a date scheduled for hearings, that's today, correct?
There is a hearing that is today. So Sue's just commenting that she can't go on unmute for some reason. Maybe we could try to have her call back in again. There is a public hearing that is today to solicit feedback on this. So that will comply with the federal regulations that have been adopted to meet COVID.
But, but it have, but what type of outreach to get people to know that this meeting is happening?
That was through the, and again, I think I need Sue for this totally, but typically through the listserv that we have.
Is that anything different than what you normally do?
No, the process is different. This is no different than ESG CV1, the one that was previously adopted by the council. Again, the regulations have changed because of the federal government, because of the COVID situation, so we're consistent with that. It's not a standard year-to-year process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any further questions for either Lamadu or Brendan Mahaffey?
We, I was looking for the list, Majority Leader, and he says Sue has that list.
And, and Council President, I'm going to try to pull that up for you as well right now. I didn't have it before me, but I will work to do that.
And I'm, I'm okay with coming back to that item, Majority Leader, if you want to.
All right, why don't we come back and see if we can get Sue back on and we'll continue with, are there any other commissioners on before we go move to the full agenda? Okay. All right, why don't we start from the top and then we'll come back to you?
Sure, yeah, let me see what I can do to bring Sue in to provide additional detail.
So we'll go to item. Number one is receive and file. We'll come back to number two. Number three is an elegant extension of.
So number three, because it's a DDA, goes to committee. The same thing. Oh, no, that's an extension, so I'm okay with that extension on number three. So we can move that forward and number four would be the one going to committee.
Okay, number four goes to committee. What committee would you like it to go to?
Wherever we send designated CD? CD?
CD. Number five is in Fillmore, permission to grant utility easement.
What department sent this or filed this?
It may have been Public Works or?
It was filed by the mayor.
Good division of, Councilmember, Division of Real Estate sent it. We were working with the Department of Public Works on the utility easement issue. We filed it because of its, because it's an easement.
Okay.
Can you do this?
Essentially utilize the corridor to allow national grid to utilize an existing utility corridor so that the long shed will have power for when it, I believe they're planning to open in the early fall. So this is to run the line down an existing utility corridor.
Motion to approve, Mr. Jordan.
I'm having problems with my, my laptop. Somebody might have to take up the, the agenda. Could Chris read the agenda off? My battery, for some reason, I'm having it.
I, I can read up if nobody responds.
Would you please read the agenda? Thank you.
All right, what number? We are on, on number six, which is the report of sale. Brendan, I just have a question for you. Is, what's the deal with this one? Why isn't it designated developer? Yeah, doesn't matter. Yeah, why, why is it, why is it not a designated developer?
Let me just bring that, that out for you right now, sir. Bringing it up.
It's four lots on, five lots on Broadway.
This was a previously designated developer agreement with the, with, with the council. So at this point in time, with the project having progressed, now it's at the point of sale, but it, this can go to committee.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't need to go to committee. I'm okay with it moving forward, so you can get a closing on it. I just wanted to make sure that the project is progressing to the point that he's now ready to do the sale. So he has all of those things in line that we need.
Yes, that was the determination made by the Division of Real Estate. So again, it was a previous, previously a designated developer agreement.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. So we can move that one to approve? Next item is Controller and Majority Leader, just let me know when you want, when you want your seat back. Controller's item seven, the civil service. And Councilmembers, just stop me if, if you need to speak on an item. Number eight is approved, nine, 10 is approved. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, all approved. As marked, 24 is marked approved. DPW will make a substitution on those as discussed a little earlier, all the way to 27. 28 is an approval all the way through and including. Keep going for me. Thank you so much. Keep going to the, to the final approval. It all the way down to 39 is all approved. Majority Leader, you back?
Yeah.
I'll stop. You're back in, in your seat.
40 and 41, civil service. 43 is a receive, receiving flower, receiving file. 43, 44, 45 are approved.
Majority Leader, just to clarify, that's 42, that's recommended for receiving file.
Oh, 42 is receive and file. 43, 44, and 45 approve. 46 is in North.
Majority Leader?
Yes.
Number 42, I wanted to go back to.
Okay.
I, I know we had conversations about those dollars and I just didn't know, I think Council President was leading that. Did you get any resolution on those forfeiture dollars? I know the council was looking at a portion of those dollars.
I know it's been some time and I really can't recall. I don't think that we did get any progress on it. I don't, we don't, I don't mind us talking about it again if you wanted to send it to a committee and, and let's talk about it again.
Will you please do that? Thank you.
You want to send to Finance?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alrighty, I think the Majority Leader's.
I was asking, had you switched back and we didn't hear it or?
No, I mean, yeah, I think something is up with this phone. Were we at 46 or which number do we stop at?
46, sir.
46, North District? It, I'm not sure if the Councilmember is on.
And while we wait for Councilmember Gollumbe, Councilmember Wyatt seeks your attention.
Councilmember Wyatt?
I have a question on 44.
All right.
Is that the same, well, police is not on. I wanted to know if that's the same amount that we were paying previously. That's fire department. Is that the same, same amount we were paying previously for the, I guess, the doctor, medical services?
Yeah. It's, they're not on, but we can ask them that question if you'd like for tomorrow.
Yeah, please.
Chief of Staff, please make sure we have an answer on that and Majority Leader, you back with us? I think you're on mute. I know you're on mute. Majority Leader, we can't hear you. All right, I'll keep going to the Majority Leader. Majority Leader, just let us know when you're ready. All right, so we answered that question. Can we bring back up the agenda? Please. Thank you, Jim. So 46 was in North, he's not on, I believe, so we'll send that without rec. 47 is approval, 48, North. And again, if he's not on, we will send without rec. 49 is in the Maston District Tire Handler, 1699 main. Is the Councilmember on for Maston?
Yeah, I'm here. I know, I know, absolutely. Send that to committee.
Sending that to committee? Where do we send those? Which committee you wanted to?
Legislation.
Legislation. Number 50 is civil service. Going to civil service, 51 approved, 52 receiving file along with 53. 54 is adopt, then 55 is adopt. 56 is going to be going to the Committee on Education, 57 to CD, 58 to ledge. 59 receiving file, 60 receiving file, all the way through 63. 64 is the letter sent to me by Majority Leader Stokes concerning residency for police. I'll talk more about that tomorrow. We can send that to ledge. 65 is going to education, 66 to CD. The submission list is before us. Everything is marked up to number four, which is the approval for the contract with Axiom. We have not received information from Buffalo Police Department as for the item to be recommitted. So 50, 50, I'm sorry, four will just remain, go back to ledge, will be recommitted to ledge.
Mr. Council President.
What is that, Finance? I'm sorry. Five is receiving files, six and seven receiving file, eight is approved, nine is receiving file, or as marked, I'm sorry. And community development, everything is marked in legislation. Yes, sir.
Can we go back to the one item for consolidated plan?
In which committee, sir?
For community development.
All right, we definitely can. You have the floor.
Number 11, we were waiting, waiting for a breakout of the dollars being spent by district. I don't believe we received that as of yet.
Is Mr. Mahaffey still on?
Yes, we are doing that and you should have it before the meeting tomorrow. As, as I mentioned, we typically don't break down the dollars by council district. So we are going through over the last three years, I believe it is. So you'll have 2016, 17, and 18 broken down by council district. So I've, I've been receiving that from staff.
Okay, and I did have a conversation with Mr. Mestry as far as Eight Days of Hope, so hopefully we'll continue to move with that, so I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Absolutely, thank you.
All, all righty. We'll bring the agenda back up. We are at 21. Thank you for the highlight, is without rec Niagara District.
And I'm not. Motion it, well, that's, that's one of the special use permits that we had agreed that we would go down tomorrow.
So we're sending that without rec?
Without rec.
22 is approved, 23 and down to 32 is without rec. And just so that the public knows, we did have public hearings today. We are sending these items without rec to give people, as our Majority Leader stated at the beginning of the meeting, who may not have had a chance to weigh in on those items, the opportunity to call our council staff's office or your council member and so that we, of, of the individual projects, so that we give the public every opportunity to weigh in before making a decision. Chief of Staff, can you give them the number to call?
Yes, for this particular set of public hearings, we also have a form that's available if you visit our Facebook at facebook.com/bflocc. You can also send an email to councilstaff@city-buffalo.com or call in at 851-510-5105. or call in at eight five one five one zero five.
All right, and Majority Leader, you back up? You back with us?
Oh, you go ahead and finish it off. Thank you. It might go off again.
Did you, did you have any comment on that one item from, uh oh no, that was going, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll keep going. All right. All right, so down to resolution sixty-seven is to adopt. Sixty-eight uh approve, sixty-nine uh we go to, we, we, we just send all, all of that to ledge, right? So we'll send that to legislation, thank you. Um seventy is going to ledge, and this is directly, um you know, the state is now um as we'll discuss a little bit tomorrow, um it seems to be moving about allowing cities to do um residency laws for police. Um and my question is, how do we check residency now? Um before we even get into that, so that the process, um we know how it, it'll be there and, and ready to work if need be. Um so that is what that one is about. The agenda? Um seventy is adopt, seventy-two adopt, seventy-three adopt? And is that it? And that's the end of the agenda?
You've been, you've been joined by Sue Lamadu. She's back online. Also, as well, the Mestry is on, I believe we passed his item, but if there were concerns, he is still connected with us as well.
Sue, are you with us now? Sue?
I think I'm here. Can you hear me?
Now we can. There you go.
Oh yay, so sorry about that. Oh my goodness.
We're, we're fine, Sue. Sue, can you give us the agencies that um from the grant that will be, that will be awarded?
Sure I can. Uh let me pull up that list, but again, I just wanted to let you know that we are once again awarding based on the categories that HUD lays out to serve homeless individuals. Um sorry.
Sue, I can, I can go, I can run down the list if you'd like. I have it in front of me.
I've got it here too, Brendan. I got it. So we're going to be, um, we're going to be providing rapid rehousing funds to Beth Self. The Buffalo Urban League will get prevention and rapid rehousing funds. Catholic Charities Prevention and Rapid Rehousing. Compass House um received in the first round uh funding for youth rapid rehousing that will stay. Hispanics United will be funded for um rapid rehousing. We are funding home. Um they'll be assisting in the rapid rehousing program. Little Portion Friary, that is a shelter that had to close because they were all volunteer-driven. So we have provided some funding so they can hire a shelter director so they can reopen and stay open. We are funding neighborhood legal services, rest for prevention, again, to provide legal services. Restoration Society for, for prevention and for shelter. Salvation Army for rapid rehousing. And then Spectrum Health will be providing rapid rehousing for reentry clients. So that's a new twist on an older program.
Sue, did the city mission at all apply? Okay, that's fine. If they didn't apply, they didn't apply. All of these agencies that have uh accepted, now I've asked this in the past. Um do they have the anti-discrimination policy? Am I still on? Is Sue still with us or anybody who knows Brendan?
Uh no, I mean, I, I do know that um under the uh federal regulations, uh they can't, but whether they as an organization have adopted one, that I can't speak to. So hopefully Sue.
So I'm, I'm concerned about that because when people need housing, I think the last thing they need is to go to an agency that says we won't accept you because
Correct.
Um your orientation, your ethnicity, your whatever. Um and if, if they, so my concern is in moving, I want to move this forward, and we need to move this tomorrow. Um because the, you know, the, the need is dire. Um but I, I just need some, is there any contract that they sign that says they can't discriminate?
Yes.
So it is in the contract?
Uh the compliance with the federal rules or regulations are, um and we could pull it out specifically so that language is front and center if it isn't already. So um, so we, we can do that.
Yeah, I think that that's important. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll talk to Sue. Again, I'm not sure what happened there, but I'll talk to Sue right after this.
I'm coming back, actually. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can.
Oh my goodness. So I don't know what happened again, but um I, what was the question about uh anti-discrimination in the contract?
Yes.
Yeah, all of the federal regulations that require no discrimination are in the contract as whether, as well as other required um regulations.
So if, if an agency uh takes the money. Um but in the past, they have been very clear that they would not service based on whatever it is, uh whether it's their religious beliefs or um, I don't know, it could be anything. They are clear that they cannot do this with that federal money.
Absolutely. And you know, when we, when we house, rehouse homeless individuals, we use a coordinated entry system. All of those uh, all of those agencies are kind of trained in coordinated entry. And that means uh included in that system is the requirement that you do not discriminate based on any basis whatsoever, gender, gender identification, race, age, income, any of those types of demographics.
Thanks, Sue. I appreciate you. Thank you for the answer.
Thank you.
Majority Leader, I'm sorry, I'm not sure who's in charge. Uh Council Member Wyatt?
I just had a question, uh Mister, or Council Member Wingo. I just saw a message that someone is asking what's happening at Dewey Park. So.
Listen, we, we've been, I'm sorry, Mister Chair, is it all right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Is, is there item? No, there's no item?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Not only is, not, not only that, but I did receive an email and a phone call to my office, of which, of course, we keep a running record of every concern that we've had. And we also have a catalog of all of our newsletters that we've ever published, as well as our monthly stakeholders um meeting that we hold every single month that I proudly announce every single week in uh, uh our council meetings. So um when, 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 when people are inquiring about uh changes that literally take two years for you to begin to see changes. It makes, it just makes me wonder, you know, uh at what point were they engaged in the processes that we have that would help people stay informed? I mean, we have public um announcements all of the time. We uh have the, the, I guess, the stakeholders meetings. We have our Facebook page. The information is there. I've addressed even Dewey Avenue. I went to the Dewey Avenue Block Club Party last summer. Um pictures to prove it, and I even addressed the crowd there. We will be making modifications to Dewey Park. Uh we will be putting in a cricket pitch, uh and there will also be modifications made to the basketball courts. Uh so we've, we've, we've addressed this for years. This is not a new uh development. This is a two-year-old development. Of course, of which the community has asked us to, to, to facilitate, and that's what we've been trying to do with Department of Public Works. So um people are asking about Dewey Park, and they see the development and the movement over there. That's two years in the making. And I just want to commend uh Deputy Commissioner Andy Rab on following through and making sure that those modifications were made and that the requests that uh we made as a district were in the capital improvement pro- uh money too. So uh with that said, sorry to waste, I mean, to use this time for that, but I just wanted to make sure that it's very, very clear that we've uh done our due diligence and trying to get the information out. We've disseminated all of the information on a monthly basis through our newsletters, on a monthly basis through the stakeholders meetings, as well as from the council meetings that we have every other week in council chambers. The information's out there on our Facebook page, even my personal Facebook page. We post up information that deals with the district. So we're messing us on it.
And, and, and just so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just mentioned the council member because someone put it on our community council Zoom as a question, so I just put it out there for you, that's all.
Yeah, and, and just so that the public understands, we're not sidestepping a question. This is our caucus, and the caucus deals with things that will be on the council's agenda for Tuesday. Um and we really do not have anything in front of us about Dewey Park. Um and so I know that when people get on, they often think it's um kind of an open uh meeting of just different items. It is the items that are before us tomorrow. Any other items that are on the agenda? All right, seeing none. Um thank you, everybody. Appreciate you.